Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Braden?
Okay, so, thank you. The numbers came in, I was hoping they had for you last Thursday, sorry, Braden Clay's chief of staff. As far as the prefabricated building for the Friends Pathology Project, they came in at what they thought with equipment would be anywhere from three hundred and fifty to four hundred and forty dollars per square foot, down from the twelve hundred dollar per square foot number that Smith Group had kind of quoted us last year. That would, that would put us at, rather than paying nine million, they'd be putting us closer to this three point five million dollar number that Christie's got. And that is before any donation has been worked in from the donor network group. We still haven't heard back from them as far as what number they're considering that they feel is feasible for tissue and organ donors in our, in our region. That would be the main update. There's still no final contract from Portnoy, but all indicators were that that was still good to go. We're working on getting those and make sure that's good. We do have locums, which I believe I touched on with you last, last week when we talked about this. They're coming in at one time a week. We've also got a doctor out of Utah that's committed to come in one time a week, so we'll have coverage front and back end of the week is what we're thinking right now. And we've got a, we've got a lot of counties that are, that weren't included in the original seventeen that are still interested in coming down and adding to, in addition to the seventeen that we have already had support asked from or received from.
So, and this is the question that I said I was waiting for, the doctor. But a little more detail there.
So, the doctor right now is currently a state employee in Utah. Once he retires fully, he's committed to doing it at least once a week. Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit about kind of what you think strategy would be for recruiting a long-term doctor?
And I don't want to go into personnel. I mean, I don't want to go into wages and all that other stuff, because we're not in executive session for that. But, but that's always been my concern in moving forward. And so I just, how comfortable are you feeling?
With this doctor, he was adamant that he has no other hobbies, really. So, once he retires from the state, he is looking for things that he can do for the foreseeable future. So, he, he has indicated that he would be willing to help us out as long as he needed to, as long as it took for us to find somebody full-time, and even then, that he would be willing to come in and work instead of the doctor, should there be vacations or whichever, you know, displacements, things like that. So, we do have a pretty strong commitment from him, at least at the one time a week. Now, whether we want to run locums and the doctor, you know, each once a week is a different story.
Locums.
Locums?
What's the travel?
Traveling pathologists, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
I knew.
So, I'm the eighth out of nine kids, got six doctors in my family. Locums are not a long-term answer, or even really a short-term answer. So, my question is this. Locums are the most expensive doctors you can pay. The most.
Traveling nurses.
Yeah. There, there is no question about that. So, my concern, I'll just say, is, okay, so if we go with locums right now while we keep searching, how are we going to get a doctor in a year if, if we're just going off locums? And what's going to change from now to then? So, down the road, what are we going to do? How are we going to be able to get a full-time doctor when we're going to the bottom of the barrel, which is locums?
Why do you say they're the bottom of the barrel?
Because what I mean by that is, they are the most expensive that you can get.
And we've negotiated a price at this point in time where, when they come up for a day, three autopsies would cover, more than cover their expenses. So, three autopsies a day covers the locum expense. The other doctor that we're talking to, one autopsy would cover his expense for the day. So, from a pricing standpoint, we're, we're in a pretty reasonable spot that way. Locums are not a long-term solution, I agree. The strategy that we're looking at, and again, just kind of waiting to hear what the, the donation piece is, is what we can offer to recruit a doctor to come in long-term. And one of the things that we're exploring is the, oh, good grief, Braden, my mind is stuck.
Pay off their loan.
Yeah, the student loan. So, you sign a contract with us, a five-year contract with us, we'll give you X amount per year to pay off your student loan, or pay towards your student loan. So, you'll have your salary plus, once is your shot to pay that, to, to give us a five-year commitment that you were concerned about earlier, which was a valid, valid concern.
Which we're running into in, you know, finding, competing with that right now and finding our own pathologist. So, that's something that has been really, I think, just kind of created in the last year or two, and pushed, at least the way that it has been in the last couple of years. And that's just because there is such a shortage of this kind of doctor.
And so with the, with the construction costs that we're talking about, that's coming in about three million for the, the size of building and the equipment.
I'm sorry, total?
Total.
That includes the equipment? Because he said it was about three point five.
I said three point five including equipment.
About, you said about three point five.
Three point five including.
Then really three is what we're talking about, or?
Well, I'm, I'm, the majority of the big equipment was included in my three million dollars that I just threw out. So, there could be some other stuff that we're.
So, we're still at this three point five number?
Yeah. And, and that's why I'm waiting to, to complete our potential strategy for recruiting until we get the, the donation piece and what they're interested in.
Sure.
And then depending on what they say they're interested in, then that would dictate our recruitment strategy and what we could offer to help recruit. So, again, I'm keeping my total price tag below that three point five million.
Well, I'll just say where I'm at, which is not going to surprise anybody. I'm still not in favor of building a laboratory, especially if we can work out a deal with Portnoy and we can use their facility, and we're only talking a couple of times a week doing something. To me, the, I mean, we've waited a long time to get a doctor, we don't have a doctor. We've got these traveling doctors, this guy from Utah, when does he retire?
December.
December, so, I don't know. It just seems to me that our safest option would be to utilize the Portnoy facility, get this guy from Utah, at an as-needed basis. It's obviously the best deal as compared to this, this, this group that he doesn't like. And, and that's what, if we're, if we're going to do autopsies, I think that's the safest way to go. And we're not making this huge capital investment, which I think has still got more risk than I'd be willing to pursue, so.
That's fair. You raise valid points, very valid points. And again, I, I still think we're a couple of weeks away from having the definitive pieces in place. We're, we're so close to having all the numbers that we can make a, a very solid, concrete decision which way to go. And without a doubt, finding a doctor is definitely a, a very challenging thing right now. We've got a lead on three or four, but they're kind of waiting to hear from us what we do with our recruitment package before they want to talk more. So, like I said, we're, we're just, we're so close to having the pieces in place to make a real decision that we're, we're sticking to our October deadline to have that, but we're not going to make it by October first.
So, and then the other deal, we talked about procurement. So, the facility and stuff is all over a hundred thousand dollars. So, we have to go through the procurement process of doing all this. And so my question is, do we start the procurement process to look at it and see how the bid comes in, that we would know what the price is? Because right now, you don't have a guarantee.
I'm not ready to start the procurement process just yet because I don't want to commit. Again, I'm with John, there's some risk here, and I might want to commit to that risk just yet.
Well, and I'm, I'm.
Starting the procurement process, to me, is kind of taking that step to the.
Point of no return.
The point of no return. And I don't feel like we're there just yet. We're, we're looking at the line, but we're not at the line.
And, and okay, and I, I don't have any problem with that. I'm just saying that we have fifteen months to spend this money, and if we're waiting another three months to get down the road before we can start the procurement process, we're at twelve months. It is, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
But, but through that process, we cannot accept any bids. And that's what I'm talking about there is, I just, it's, it's still an unknown to me. I mean, that, but that's the big part. That's the three million dollars, it's an unknown still.
It seems to me by far the safest option is what I've described. Just use the.
But that is not the option to get us certified and, and have an accredited facility.
You know, we've had, there's some question in my mind at least about how critical this certification is, especially when we had that conversation with the one doctor, who didn't think it was worth anything.
Right, which was one data point. And you're a data guy, so you need more than one data point.
More than one doctor. Well, not on this.
Well, then that's a bias, and I might want to let you.
It is a bias. You know, you know where my bias is on this. To me, this would be so much safer just to, let's, let's do the, let's do the autopsies with Portnoy. Let's get the guy from Utah and do them. That is the minimal risk. And let's use this ARPA money for other stuff in the county that will definitely shore up some of this longstanding, outstanding maintenance and those types of things. If this is successful, there's going to be another chance down the line to build a lab if it's necessary.
That's a bigger risk than the other.
I don't think so. Because there's no risk with what we're doing here.
There's almost.
There's almost no risk. It's an opportunity cost, possibly, but it's not a risk.
With the doctor, one day a week in the space at, at Portnoy, I don't know that we would be able to.
We wouldn't be recruiting seventeen counties.
Right.
No.
There would be a Banning County facility, that we would pay the doctor to come in and do our, our. That's all.
And then other, other counties could do the same thing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that to me is a better solution.
We're not talking, we're talking apples and oranges, in my opinion, in that situation. We're not talking, we're talking about utilizing the hospital up here for Banning County and not going to, and we would end up paying the, the doctor. Where the other one is, we're going to, we're talking about a facility where other counties can come in. So, I would say, I, I, I don't know where I'm at right now. I'm still up in the air. I still have questions. Like I say, I have questions about the doctors and I have questions about the, the building. I mean.
Sure.
We've had a lot of projects since we've talked about ARPA, and we start here, and then all of a sudden, they're up here. And I, I thank you, both of you, for the work that you've done to bring this from nine million dollars down, back down to three, four million dollars. I mean, that's, that's, you guys have worked hard, but I'm still, I don't have all my answers.
And I hope to have them for you within the next two weeks.
I'm willing to give you a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Like I said, we, we hope to hear back from the, the donor, because that's, that's the big unknown right now. If that comes back with a good number, then that changes the picture substantially.
Significant.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, hey, all right.
You got five minutes, and then we're going to have to change, and then we can come back.
Okay, well, I've got two items on, that I wanted to talk about, I'll just do one right now. For five minutes, I was supposed, you'd asked me to give a department update once a month, and I, did you, by chance, get the attachment that I sent? It was a little late, but it just, program update?
Oh, I got it.
Any?
What was the attachment, which one?
It just said program update, September twenty.
Yeah, saw that.
Okay. So, it's just kind of an update on what we've been doing in my department. I, there's two pages. The first one is very similar to what I talked to you about last month with completed projects. What's still in progress, and I know I only have two days before the end of the fiscal year, but we're finishing up open enrollment. And out of approximately four hundred benefited employees as of my report this morning, we still have close to a hundred that still need to get their paperwork in. And so, it's, it's been a bit of a.
How many in this room?
A few. So, it's been a bit rocky, but we've, we've been reaching out to supervisors and getting a good response and push, we're doing all that we can. And it, it was just tricky where we added a new benefit, and we're trying to get every single person to enroll. I do have at twelve o'clock this room reserved for, for support, and we'll, we'll do what we can in our last couple of days.
Just depends on how long we keep going.
Yeah. So, so anyway, we're working on that, and that, that's been a, a lot of energy from my office as well as Christie's office and, and effort on that. So, trying to, trying to do all we can. The other thing is, what I wanted to also present to you is we're on the verge of implementing applicant pro as our new applicant system. We just, it's ready to go. We just need to do some training and get, get, flip the switch, right? For, and so we've got some trainings, we're scheduling with local officials and department heads next week. We want to wait till open enrollment goes over. And we were hoping to flip the switch next week, but we may have to, to wait just a little longer, just to make sure everybody gets trained. We have fifteen current recruitments going, and we want, we want to start with the department heads and departments on those as we do that. So, anyway, we go, I redid the standard operating procedure to incorporate the applicant pro in there, and it depends on how much detail you want. I could talk about that maybe on the other end of this. The other thing that I wanted to point out is on the second page, some, I'm sharing with you some proposed projects and strategic priorities that Josh and I have been talking about to, for direction for next fiscal year, what we want to do. And maybe not in this meeting, but if, what I wanted to ask is just to look over it and let me know if we're headed in the right direction, and, and if there's other projects you want us to work on and focus on, please let us know. So, that's basically our, our updates. We're not making any radical changes from what we've been doing. That's just, just trying to deorganize and keep the momentum. I think we've got a lot of positive momentum, keep it going.
Okay.
So, that's my, my program update. Do you have any questions for me for, or requests?
No, I'm just excited to see the recruitment system get in play and see what that, what changes that makes.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be neat to see how this goes, so.
I was talking to the Bonneville County clerk, and she said that she recently opened a similar position to one that we have open right now, and she had thirty applicants. She said those were not all qualified, but we had thirty applicants.
We've got two for our council paper, and it's been two weeks.
Yeah, I think it'll make a difference. And you're right, I think we're going to definitely have more quantity, hopefully some quality with that too.
Right. Well, that's what, that's what she says. She said you have to filter through those, but.
At least you have options.
At least you have some options, so hopefully we'll go.
And there's some tools with the program to help. Like it'll take care of stage one screening for us, and, and.
It'll take care of what?
The first stage of screening, minimum qualifications, so, yes. And that was going to be part two of what I wanted to talk to you about. I don't know, you want to talk about that on the other end of the?
Well, you got two minutes, whatever you got here, or I can get Nancy some time.
In my two minutes, I did send you a, a update to our standard operating procedure for the recruitment. And basically, the updates incorporate the functionality of the new system. We still have the same basic process where HR is going to post it, we wait for the applicants to apply, there's going to be a stage one screening for minimum qualifications, however, this is done by the system. Stage two screening will be numerical ranking, and that's going to, and then we have interviews, reference checks. This will be able to send a conditional offer to the applicant through an e-form, and so I'm excited about that. And, and there's a communication tool built into this program too, which we can text and communicate with the, the applicants. And the big change here is, we can easily set up managers, hiring managers with access to go directly into the system, directly see the applicants, interact with them, and, and it's all contained in, in the system, which right now, only HR is doing that, and we're kind of being the middleman. And so this will be a, a bit of a shift for the county to, to give managers more access and ability to interact, which I like.
And I think that they'll like it.
Yeah.
I'll just tell you, I don't want to sign this now. I want to implement this. I don't want to sign this and then make changes or adjustments in a month or two months, or a month and a half. I'd just soon, let's implement it, try it out a little bit, and if, if it follows this, then, then there's the procedure. I don't, I don't want to change it three times just because it's a new program.
It's probably a good idea.
Let's. With this process, does HR have to approve who we're hiring before we can hire them?
Yes. Yes. What we do is.
Will that be a fast turnaround?
Yeah. So, what happens is, HR approves the procedure, did you follow the procedure? And then the final approval is the S R A, still.
Did you not promise them more money than there?
Yeah.
We'd be in on that then?
That's.
Yeah. Well, it is, this is a, recruitment is a priority for us. I, pretty fast turnaround whenever there's a message.
Well, that's why we give you the money to move forward, and we need to move forward quickly.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and it is eleven thirty. Let's open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget.
Opening the budget?
Yes. Make a motion, go into public hearing.
Yep, I'll do that. Mr. Chair, I move that we enter, open up the public hearing.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the public hearing is now open. I haven't gone picked up the paperwork over there, but I don't believe there's anybody that has said they're going to sign, want to speak. So, we'll go ahead and go to Christie. Do you have anything? The purpose, the reasoning, and?
Can I have that? Can I bring it with me? Sorry.
Well, I don't have. All I, all I have is a public hearing notice.
Okay. Christie, Claus, a comptroller. I came before the board, requested permission to open the budget for a few departments that had, were in, going to be over-expending their budget. We have some anticipated revenues where we can open the budget, increase the budget for the revenues, and then also increase the budget authority. You should have a resolution to sign as part of this. Is it not included?
The two, or the all, all that were included in your?
Okay.
Yeah, I saw the two.
Well, then the resolution, I guess, will be coming on Tuesday.
How much money are we talking about?
It's supposed to be here.
Christie, how much money are we talking about?
We have money for, I think it was ninety thousand for Office of Conflict.
I'm sorry.
Ninety thousand for Office of Conflict. And then we had, I don't have it with me. I can go downstairs, grab it real quick. I assumed it'd be part of the packet, I apologize. You want to give me?
Is this Office of Conflict something we already talked about?
All of them are.
Yes. The commission had to approve opening the budget and the public hearing process. So, you approved that two, three weeks ago.
So, we've discussed all of this already, and this is just the meeting to make a determination.
The public has the opportunity to comment and make comment.
Okay.
About it.
And there should be a resolution. I will, because I tried to get that into data today, as opposed to last year, this process got a little confused, and it wasn't signed until October. So, there should be a resolution already produced. I have it in my email. If you give me one quick second. Yeah, it was right there, it just went away. Here we go. It should be a resolution. Twenty twenty-three seventy-eight. And I can, do you want me to forward it to you, Jeff?
Yeah.
I can forward it to Commissioner Huff, and then he can read it.
Can you forward it to you too?
Yeah. I forget you have yours open too.
I'm always the resolution number seventy-eight. The two we did to this day were eighty-three and eighty-four.
Yeah, but it wasn't another one I mentioned.
No, I told you, this should have been right in there.
This should have it, actually.
Like eighty-two or eighty-five.
Yeah, the date needs changing. The resolution is just what we put in the paper to open the public hearing. It was seven thousand dollars for adult probation, so that they could cover the physician, the retirement. There was thirty-eight thousand dollars for the fair exhibit to cover their overages and entertainment. There was a hundred and forty thousand dollars, sorry, for Office of Conflict, and then there was eight hundred and two thousand for health insurance. We had our meeting on August thirty-first to talk about it.
Okay. It looks like all the money, we already discussed this, all the money's there, it's just.
Yeah. This was just the, it's a year-end process where we.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we didn't have to use contingency.
Okay.
And again, I apologize, usually I have this ready, and.
We're good.
I did just forward the resolution to Christie. The date on here is September twenty-first, that'll need change to today.
So.
The public hearing date should be fine. It shows it on the?
Public hearing held on September twenty-first.
Down there, sorry, I was thinking the budget, 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 public hearing. So, that'll need changed to the twenty-eighth also.
Yeah.
Other than that.
So, the total amount we're talking about is nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred, and we had enough revenue come in to, to cover that.
Right. I just didn't budget enough revenue in those line items, so that we, that's why it's unanticipated.
Where did the revenue come from?
For adult probation, six thousand dollars came from probation fees. For the fair, it came from ticket sales and concession revenue. For Office of Conflict, it came from the state indigent defense reimbursements. And then for health insurance, it came from, some of it was employee reimbursements, some of it was refunds from gym plan for Cobras, and then also rebate money.
Very good.
Okay, any further discussion? Ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we close the public hearing.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a resolution?
Well, it wasn't in the packet, can we approve it, or?
Probably have to wait, huh?
It was sent with public hearing information, but it wasn't part of the packet.
It wasn't part of the packet, so the public hasn't seen it?
Not within the packet. If they saw the public, publication notice.
There was publication.
It was published, no.
It just wasn't in the packet?
It just wasn't in the packet.
I think if it was published, and then, and they had an opportunity to look at it.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve resolution number 2023-78, with the exception that we changed the date, that the public, that the budget meeting was held on September 21st to today, September 28th.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Nancy.
Mr. Nurse, this is just the traffic enforcement grant project, what the sheriff's office does, but with the state of Idaho, and we're basically, we're contracted with them, therefore, we're signing this agreement, the grant portal's open up on set dates for each different project that the state would like them, like juvenile drinking, or speeding, or drunk driving. And most of the funds that we will get reimbursed for is on overtime for the sheriff's office, and for the mini-grants, there's match, what we use, our MyLabs. We match that.
We use already paid out monies.
It's an in-kind match, is it?
Yeah. But the windows are short, so we're also asking for the memo to be signed for, as they open up, he just does a quick application for those funds.
Okay.
They do utilize some of these grants up at the wellness complex, so when they have the underage drinking and some of those.
High school rodeo.
Yeah, high school rodeo. They do utilize some of these.
Now, it's junior high rodeo.
Up there to try and beef up patrols.
Yeah. Congratulations. Okay. Motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the grant application and authorize, what did you say?
Sergeant Jeff Fulmer.
Authorize Sergeant Fulmer to submit as needed.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that being said, we are adjourned.